All right.
They're just precisely three minutes late.
And I know Charlie has everything, so he should be coming in.
Okay, well, wait a minute or two.
I fixed lighting.
Well, we could start. What do you think? I mean.
I would give him one more minute. It's only 7:02. I would give him a minute. It could be computer issue or. You know, and see, I have everything. Everything is continued and we can, if we need to. I'm just looking, we have a couple to. And we'll have a little bit of a hole in the agenda due to the continuation, but that's okay because there's other things that we can fill it with.
Yeah, we have a new hearing.
Well, they've been advertised at a specific time, but let me just check what that is.
7:35.
On the agenda, but I'm going to check the ad.
Oh, I see.
Okay, so I did advertise it at seven, so if need be, but we do, we do have other items, but we can take it earlier when we need to.
Why don't we?
We could, yeah, so.
When we start up, particularly since the first couple of hearings are the are Mike's assignment and the last one is of the four continued is Lee's. So anyway, I'll convene the meeting tonight. This is zoning board of appeals, town of Cohasset, Tuesday, October 5th, 2021. And sitting as the board are myself, Woody Chidick, Mike Dickey, Lee Darst. Our other three members are expected to join us in short order. The first piece of board business, we can check in with those folks in a bit. The next two meeting dates of the zoning board, November 2nd and December 7th.
Mr. Chairman, can I just trouble you for a roll call vote?
Sure, go ahead. Oh, all right. Sorry, Woody Chidick, I. You're muted. You guys that are muted, could you, Mike and Lee unmute?
Michael Dickey, I.
Lee Darst, I.
Okay, great. All right, that's it so far. We'll have the others. How, any known conflicts with November 2nd?
And I've just promoted David.
Yep, that's fine.
None that I'm aware of, Woody.
Okay, great. And Charlie Higginson. Okay, would you guys both just verbally sign in? Are you present? Who's present? Charlie, you can say, you're muted, Charlie. Charlie is muted. What about Dave?
David is coming. He's, I think he's there.
He's there, yeah. We just need to have him sort of say, are you present, Dave? David McMorris, I. That's what he has to say.
Oh, his, he fell off again. He'll be back, but we have, we do have a quorum, so we can move on to, and I'll keep an eye out for David.
Okay, the first hearing is, well, actually, they're, they're kind of grouped together, the two, filed by Cavanaro Consulting on behalf of his client, Deborah Power, to A, install a rock revetment, and B, to construct a dock, both of which are at 74 Beet Street. The revetment goes over to 86 Beet Street, so. John, I will promote you and ask you what, if anything, has been submitted of new content.
Yeah, good evening, Mr. Chair members of the board. Nothing from us per se, other than the approvals from the Cohasset Conservation Commission that were issued since our last hearing. I think at our last hearing, we had not received an order of conditions or closure on the dock portion of the application, and that was subsequently presented, closed, and approved by the Conservation Commission. The other item that was discussed at the last hearing was the width of the stairway in the bank down to.
Oh, yeah.
And the owners ended up getting together and decided that they would agree upon a four-foot wide, not to exceed a four-foot wide stairway, which was close to what we had on the plan, so we, rather than submit a new plan and have it being sort of contrary to what was approved by the Conservation Commission, we just left it as is and leave it up to the board if they want to put any provisions in that the stairway shall not exceed four feet in width.
Yeah, I think at our last hearing, it was like three to five feet, some estimate, wasn't it, or?
Right. So the owners went and looked at it and they thought four feet was the the maximum suitable width.
Mike, that's probably an easy change to make when the time comes.
Correct. I'm taking notes.
Okay, questions of the board for John? I didn't see the order of conditions, so I don't know what, if anything, of impact there is there. Mike, were you able to look at the order of conditions?
No, I didn't see that.
So they were in your electronic packet, so you can refer to them if you wish.
Okay.
The, the, the one question I had, and that, that I, I took, you know, obviously used an earlier decision as the precedent base part, and one of, one of the things that it said. Oh, God, I'm trying to find it. I apologize. I, I, I'm trying to find it. Oh, um, the, the it, it's the structure, meaning that, you know, the retaining wall will be located more than 10 feet above mean sea level. And I wasn't able to confirm that on the on the site plan.
No, it, it won't be above mean sea level because it's, it won't be 10 feet above mean sea level because it's really a coastal structure.
You know, the.
It's not a habitable structure. It's not something that.
You know, um, the, the the precedent that that Jen sent me, mentioned something in it as, as that was a requirement, so I'm gonna have to maybe.
John, what is the elevation of this? And we should probably go, what, against mean high water?
Well, it's actually above mean high water. It goes probably from elevation six to nine. It's about a three foot tall, but it's not above 10. But again, that typically refers to buildings, habitable structures, and I believe that the relief that we were seeking, this was for flood protection.
It's probably because the retaining wall reference, and that's the structure that, and that was a previous decision. To give you the boilerplate so that you would have the boilerplate.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Let me see.
Because I think we filed under 3097D, which one of the improvements is for flood control versus 97H, which that's really when you get into the land being above elevation 10, if it's subject to title action.
Yeah, your application talks about elevation and entry range of 7.5 feet plus minus over an AVD and the elevate, height at the highest point is 10 feet plus or minus.
Oh, you know, I'm, I'm looking at the, 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 the letter that Jen sent me that, and so here's, here's what I saw. It says, and sorry if it's a little out of context, but with respect to proposed slope reinforcement, section 9.7H provides that any other construction or filling or change in grade, provided it is shown by affirmative evidence that, and there's a number of qualifiers, and then it says in qualifier two, the land, if subject to title action or adjacent to tidal waters, is 10 feet above mean sea level. So that's where I'm getting this mean 10-foot mean sea level thing. I guess it's coming from 9.7H.
Right, and we had filed for 9.7D, not 9.7H.
Okay, well, that helps me.
So one of the things is drainage improvements and flood control.
Jen, is there a way I can get a copy of the bylaws or something?
You don't have the bylaws?
No, I don't, no.
Oh, Jen, we shouldn't be meeting if we can't get bylaws out to people.
Okay, well, the bylaws are all electronic and online, so, and I, and I thought I had sent the link. I will get a, I will get a, but I will.
Well, you know, that's, that's counting on me to know what I'm doing, Jen, so that, that, that was your mistake.
Yeah, clearly, and I apologize, but also.
No, 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 no. If you sent the link and I wasn't able to figure it out, that's on me. That's operator error on my, on my part, Jen, so.
And the good news is we are gonna get, even though Carol St. Pierre has retired, we recently received approval from the AG on the nine changes we made last spring, and so we are getting new printouts. I don't know when that is, and those will be bound and done for you. But I will get you something. I'll print it offline for you.
No, 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 just, just send me the link again, and again, apologies. Okay, well, that, that's helpful. Thank you very much, John.
Welcome. Okay, are there questions of John from the board? Yes, Charlie.
John, did you testify? I can't remember anything about whether this dock would interfere with the flow of title flow.
What, I'm sorry, can you repeat that, Charlie? Will it interfere title flow?
Well, or the flow of water along Little Harbor.
No, I won't do that.
Good, okay, so I just, we should have some affirmative statement in the, to that effect for the decision. I have no other questions.
Okay, any other questions in the board, from the board? When you shaking your head, no, Dave, you got anything?
No.
Nor do I. I think we have later on a draft to consider. There may be some edits, as we've already noted, but I would make a motion. Oh, I'm sorry, Jen, is there anybody in the audience?
Oh, um, I don't see any hands raised. We do have people in the audience, but no one has their hands raised, so I think, or, or comments in the Q and A, so we are good.
Okay, so the first order of business here is the revetment itself. We have two decisions to make tonight on this particular property. So I'd make a motion to close the hearing on the installation of a revetment at 74 Beach and 86 Beet Street.
I'll second that motion, Woody.
Okay, move consecutive. Woody Chidick, I.
Lee Darst, I.
David Higginson, I.
Okay.
Michael Dickey, I.
Great, okay, so that's five zip. The second piece of this hearing is the construction of a dock at 74 Beet Street. Again, the same client, Deborah Power. John, has anything new been submitted in that regard?
No. The Conservation Commission, as I mentioned, have closed and I believe they're in the process. If we have not submitted that order, Jen, it's because we haven't received it yet. But that will be sent to you immediately upon receipt.
Okay, and the decision could always be in accordance, as it always is, in accordance with the order of conditions. Questions of John from the board? Charlie, anything? Dave? Nope. Mike?
None. It's pretty straightforward.
Okay, Lee?
None.
All right, I don't have any either, so I would make a motion to close the hearing for construction of a dock at 74 Beet Street.
I'll second that, Woody.
Move the seconded. Woody Chidick, I.
Lee Darst, I.
David McMorris, I.
Michael Dickey, I.
Thank you very much.
Okay, John, that's.
Appreciate it. Two. I see Jeff Delisi in the audience. I'm gonna say, go Sox.
You mean as a fan?
Yes.
Is Jeff a Yankees fan, or?
We're all fans, aren't we?
I think we're all fans.
The wrong team?
No.
Okay. Good evening. Thank you.
I thought I'd seen a photograph of a year or so ago of him having a drink with his mother, and I thought she was a Yankees fan, but.
He's a big Yankees fan. That's why I said.
Okay, I didn't misread that one. Our, our, our third hearing tonight is 237 Hall Street to convert an existing family home into two units. The applicant, Christopher Ford, has requested, I believe, a continuance. Jen, is that correct?
That's correct. I met with him, our speaker spoke with him throughout the month since our last meeting. He's considering another amendment to the application, and I requested, suggested that a continuation would be best, so we have the most complete packet before the board, and he agreed.
And we have that, was that came in, did that come in in writing or verbally, or how?
Yes, we have a, we have an email that I forwarded to the board this afternoon.
Oh, all right, yeah. So does anyone on the board wish to question the wisdom of continuing the hearing, or should we accept the applicant's request?
I have no objections, Woody.
Charlie?
I move we accept the applicant's request.
Okay, it's been moved. Somebody want to accept second that motion?
Second that motion.
He does, okay. Woody Chidick, I.
Lee Darst, I.
Michael Dickey, I.
David McMorris, I.
Charlie, or? Okay, and the last continuance, before we get into a new hearing, is filed by attorney Delisi on behalf of his clients, the Cranes, to construct a two-story addition, a piece of which is in the front setback on 10 Highland Avenue. So I'll turn this over to attorney Delisi.
Okay, so just to set the record straight, I have no comment on what John Cavanaro has to say about my preference for Major League Baseball teams.
That's right, we haven't taken a vote yet, so you never know.
I, that's why I, you know, I can't, I, you know, the bottom line is tonight would be great baseball. I'm gonna try and keep it brief so you guys can actually watch the game yourselves. Good thing we don't have one of those Jerusalem Road hearings.
Yeah, well, for a lot of reasons.
Yeah, right. So basically, since the last meeting, I filed the information that you requested, which was revised elevations that contain the missing sheet, as well as which contain calculations for volume within the non-conforming setback. In addition, I also provided two letters of support. I, I think Lee kind of was asking, you know, have, had we disclosed our plans to our neighbors, and I just wanted to show that we have some support from them on, these are the neighbors on either side of the property. And so I think that it's kind of a straightforward hearing. We, you know, what's interesting about this is that, is that again, that the road kind of, the house is not parallel to the road, so when you put in addition onto the house that's in the same plane as the house, as you kind of go further down the road, the portion of the addition actually gets further from, from the road, so that I think that's kind of a positive spin on this, and it makes it such that, you know, you know, I, I don't, I don't think that there would be, you know, any significant impact to the, to the neighbors on this one, and so if you have any questions about the submittal, I'm happy to answer it, but otherwise, I have nothing really further to add.
Okay.
I have a good question. Jeff, Woody brought this up. In your application, you put the setback from the street as 23.1 feet, and Woody had commented that that is not.
Required setback.
Yes.
At 23 feet. I think you must have meant 30 feet, right, Jeff, for a front setback?
The, the, the front setback is required to be, is required to be 30 feet, but the exception behind the chart indicates that we could take the average of the.
Oh, okay.
Backs, and so the required front yard setback is actually that which is reduced from 30 feet, which is the average.
So that's note three, isn't it, then?
Yeah, yeah.
Back.
Yep, it's, it's note three, and the average, just to refresh the board's recollection, the average front yard setback, the calculation is set out on the zoning plan that was filed with the initial application, is, is calculated to be 23.1 feet. And so we calculated our, we based our calculations on anything that was closer to the street than 23.1 feet, and and that's how we, we, we arrived at all our figures.
Yeah, I missed that, Lee. So it's the average of the two. Okay.
And you did the volume in cubic feet on the missing, on that page that you updated, you put the volume in cubic feet along with the differences in the square footage from the original original square footage in the, in the setback to the increased square footage, and basically the, the whole front of the house is in the setback.
Basically, the whole front of the proposed addition, actually, no, I, I think, I take that back. I think that existing houses, the entire facade is within the front yard setback, as well as the proposed facade.
Yes.
Is, and, and the calculation they referred to, Lee, is, is on sheet A8 of the most recent submittal, and the calculation was taken to the 23.1 feet, not the 30 feet.
Okay. I don't have any other questions.
And, yeah, that's helpful to have those statistics there. How about other questions from the board? Charlie, do you have any?
You have letters of support from the neighbors on either side. Does that include the one way in the back?
The, the letters of support are the east and west of Butters, so that would be eight Highland Court, which is to the west, and that's to the left, immediately to the left, and then immediately to the right, 20 Highland Court, Victoria's Burrito. We do not have a letter from the rear, the rear, so the box, we do not have a letter from them.
And the one across the street?
No, we don't have a letter from them either. There's, not necessarily indicative that they don't support this.
No.
But, but the only two letters that we have submitted are, are left and right.
Okay, other questions? I guess none? Dave, do you have anything?
No, I don't think so.
Okay, Jen, anybody in the audience?
No, I will double check. So no one has their hands raised and nothing in the Q and A.
Okay, so I think we thanks for the missing page, et cetera. So I think we're probably at a point where we can.
Actually, I have one question. I think I remember this from last time. The house across the street, it's actually going to be facing the new construction, is, my recollection is that that's quite, quite a ways away.
Yeah, it, it is. I think the last time we met, I showed you a a mass GIS map, which showed the house on that lot, and if, if you want, I can, yeah, I have it here. If you, if you want me to open it, I can show you.
Why don't you? I think it'd be useful. It won't take much time, and.
Sure. So I'm just doing this from the, for the screen share from the iPad, would you believe it, during COVID, for the very first time, so give me a second here.
You're way ahead of me.
Well, I'm not there yet.
But no pressure.
Yeah, lots of pressure. Oh, share content. There we go, okay. Okay, so you guys can see my, you should be able to see my screen, and can you see, can you see that now?
Yes, I can.
Okay, so 17 Highland Court is the property across the street, and it's kind of what I was saying at the last hearing. You see our house located on 10 Highland Court here. There's, the way it's located on the lot is there's an awful lot of land to the right, you know, in relation to where the house is, so that, that's kind of nice. But as far as the house across the street, I haven't done a calculation, but if, if you look at our house, and if our house is about 23 feet, the house across the street looks to be maybe about the same, if, if not, not maybe slightly less. But again, it wouldn't, you know, our house is not directly across the street from that house either, so the distance between the two is, is much further. That's the only thing I'd really point out.
If this, I, I didn't see this in my packet. Jeff, could you just get us, make sure we have a copy for the?
It is.
It is? Maybe it's, wait a minute. Okay.
Yeah, we have it. I have it to my packet.
I stand corrected. I got it right here.
If you, if you need another copy, I'm more than happy.
No, no, it was, I think I brought this up last time, yeah. Does that address your the underlying question, Dave?
Yes.
Any other questions in the part of the board?
All right, let's play ball.
All right, so I would make a motion to close the hearing on 10 Highland Court. All right, so I would make a motion to close the hearing on ten Highland Court. Right, move to seconded, all in favor, would each of you like a ride?
Lee Darstai.
Dave McMorris, hi.
Michael Dickey, aye.
Great, all right. Thank you very much.
Yup.
Okay, so now, uh, we have one new hearing tonight on, there we go, on, uh, twenty-five Border Street, filed by Stephen Bjorkland, on behalf of his client Marlene Nguyen, would like to construct an addition for a first floor bathroom, um, part of which, might say, some, a lot of which is within the side setback. So it's filed under the, uh, eight, seven. So, all right.
Mr. Chairman, I have, I have promoted Steve Bjorkland, Steve, do you want me to promote Caroline?
Uh, there may be one question for her to just verify, uh, towards the end of this.
All right, um, I've done that, and, um, I have a couple of things I can share for you, uh, when you need them.
Okay, and I'm not sure we're gonna need too much, but, uh, again, thank you, Steve Bjorkland, uh, representing the Nguyen Trust, and, uh, as Woody said, this is, uh, it's an addition for a first floor bathroom for Mrs. Nguyen, who is, uh, I hate to say it, getting a little bit elderly, and, uh, is, is going to have difficulty getting to the second floor of her house, and the addition is approximately seven and a half feet by sixteen feet, and what it does is closes in the back, uh, as you look at the plan, the back left-hand corner of her home, the house itself, uh, in the front corner is two point three feet from the property line, this addition is actually three point two feet, so the back of the house does get a little bit further away from the property line than the front, uh, northwesterly corner of it. Um, it's a single-story addition, I think all the board members have pictures of the site both before and after, um, with the proposed addition on it. We have, uh, received numerous letters in support from, uh, neighbors. Uh, I think there might be a total of five letters that have been brought in. Uh, the only, uh, one that we have not received, uh, a letter for would be Mrs. Massa. I'm not sure if she's on the, uh, the video tonight or not, but, uh, she's approximately, approximately three hundred feet away from where the proposed addition is going to be, and there's tremendous amount of woods between the back of this property and where Mrs. Mass's parking areas and dwelling, are, are considerably far away. Um, I will note that the closest neighbor, um, to this on the west side uh, is Mr. Dennehy, John and Pam Dennehy, and, uh, we've had numerous conversations with them. I do know the board received a letter, and John is also, uh, I believe, here at the meeting, so he may want to speak. Uh, if I misspeak, he may want to speak. Um, but, uh, they put a letter in through their attorney, and I have met with him, uh, numerous times since that letter went in, and we have addressed all of the concerns, and I think he's prepared to tell you that he is in favor of uh, her getting the special permit and, um, being able to construct her first floor bathroom. So, with that said, uh, I would like to add, um, for his benefit and the board's benefit as well, that the items that we went through, uh, with John and Pam and myself, uh, and some of the Nguyen family as well over uh, almost a year, I guess, from starting this project, uh, to the point where we are right now. Um, the, the Dennehys would like to, uh, be able to do screening, again, this is gonna be on their property, um, and we, we have no issues with them adding any vegetation that they'd like to add. Um, we, uh, they want to make sure that the foundation is hand dug, and we did receive conservation approval for this, I think, last week, uh, under an RDA, because it is ninety-one feet away from Cohasset Harbor, so we got what's referred to as a negative determination, which is a good thing. Uh, so the, so there's no blasting, there's no, um, there's no hammer, there's no excavator that's coming around the backyard with a hammer. Uh, it's, it is a very tight little area. Um, uh, we went through the drainage, and after meeting them on site, I think that, um, John would tell you as well, that in the area of this addition, when his home was reconstructed by the builder, that there's a patio area that's actually at a higher elevation by about a foot from where the ground elevation is on the Nguyen property, so we don't expect that there's gonna be any issues as far as drainage from this small addition is concerned. Um, I think that letter indicated that, uh, we have a, a flush skylight that's gonna be uh, on the ceiling, and that shows in the structural plan, so it's not tilted up or anything, it's gonna be probably about four to six inches above the elevation of the roof, but it's what they call a flush skylight. And they wanted to make sure, and the plans also show that there is one small decorative window that's gonna go in, it's basically a round window just to let light into the bathroom area. And, uh, they've agreed that that is not a problem, we, we believe it's gonna be a frosted window, so it's, it'll be opaque in, in one way or another. And there is presently a couple of air conditioning condensing pipes that come down on that inside corner, that either will end up inside the wall when the builder starts, or it'll be trimmed out in some way that hides those two pipes, uh, most of which will be kind of hidden by this addition anyway, but we'll make sure that those pipes are covered with something so that it's attractive towards the Dennehy property. And, uh, we are removing windows that are in that area, there's three windows presently, full-size windows, and reducing, I guess, the, the visibility towards the back of the Dennehy property. So we've got, we've gone to, to great lengths, I think, to, uh, to deal with, uh, what would be the closest of butter to this, and if John wishes to speak, you could let him in, and I think he would verify that information. Um, I think the only other thing that I would start before asking if there's any questions, I know that you look towards the volume in the setback, and this is where Caroline might want to speak, but I believe I have been told it's seventeen hundred and seventy cubic feet. So the interior space on this is really like seven feet by fifteen and a half feet, so, uh, it's just a bathroom to be able to put in a, a full bath, rather than, uh, you know, just a sink and stuff. And I would entertain any questions that the board may have, and listen to any neighbor, I can't see if there's any other neighbors on or not on my screen, so, uh, if anybody else wants to speak, I'll try and address all the questions that I can.
Well, let's first, before we let anybody else in, um, have the board, uh, ask questions of you, Steve, and then we can see what else comes up, so, board members. Dave?
Um, yeah, the, the one thing that I, I don't see is a calculation of this square footage of increased non-conformity, I mean, generally, we look for, um, the existing non-conformity square footage, and then what additional facade we're going to have that's, um, non-conforming?
Well, this is a hundred, about a hundred and twenty square feet.
And, and what's, what's the existing non-conformity?
Uh, that may be a question for Caroline, I, uh,
Okay.
I know there is a plan that's out there, uh, I, I tried not to give the board all the architectural plans, because they were very extensive, um, and I don't, I mean, the front setback doesn't meet, um, again, but they're not proposing anything there. The rear setback we meet, and the side setback on the east side we meet, so it really is just uh, a hundred and twenty square feet of increase in squ- in square footage.
Volume metric.
Volume metric is seventeen hundred and seventy cubic feet, but it's a hundred and twenty square feet of, of footprint.
Uh, footprint. Well, perhaps we should invite Jen, um, is, is Caroline, I don't know, or are you?
Yes, Caroline's, Caroline's here.
Yeah, and I would be happy to clear that up.
Sure.
Um, thank, thanks for, thanks for hearing us tonight, first of all, and second of all, the house is so old that the existing property is already within the setback, so that this little addition which squares off the corner of the existing home is, is completely within the setback. Um, and I'm happy to share my screen, I have some documents up that might clarify it, if that would be helpful to show both eyes and the scope, okay, let me see if I can do that. Okay, can, can everyone see my screen? So this is, and, and full disclosure, this is my grandmother's house, but I'm also an architect, and I, I work in the DC area, and I'm helping her out with this, this is, um, from the front, this is her home on the left, and the, uh, Butters' home on the right, they're very close to each other already. Um, and maybe this is the best diagram, this entire facade of her home is within the setback. So this addition, while also within the setback, is a zero percent increase in what, what is there? And volumetrically, below, you can see how much of the house is within the setback, the twenty-foot setback, and then, uh, the addition, which is gonna fall within that area as well. But essentially what we're doing is, um, squaring off this existing corner of the house, we're adding a small modest bathroom, which is gonna enable her to stay in the home as she ages, and, um, we have received the support of the neighbors, which we're very grateful for, um, the Dennehys who are in twenty-three Border Street, and also neighbors that are along this, um, the, the Border Street area, because we know it's important to maintain the, the neighborhood.
You're saying from a volume metric standpoint, it's the increase is six point eight percent?
Correct, yes.
Which is pretty small.
The, um, and I'd be happy to share a plan too, you can see, maybe if I can zoom in here. This is the first floor of the home, and this is the bathroom, this is the size of the addition, it's a hundred and twenty square feet in the corner of the house. So, shower and a bath from the front, I'll show one more time. It looks like this, and then the, the view of the home that is perhaps most critical is the view from the Dennehys from these back upper gardens, because there's quite an increased grade, increase in slope and increase in grade, and this is, we've tried to tuck it behind the existing fence and the existing rock wall that's here, um, and keep it as low as profile as we can, um, just so that it's, we can keep it, keep it functional, but keep it, keep it sweet, short and sweet. Is that helpful?
Actually, right, this page that you have up now has the existing facade. Um, I mean, it, it looks to me like the increased facade in the setback is going to be the front, the side, and the roof, I mean, essentially the whole surface. Um, so I don't know what that calculation is, but it's obviously a small fraction of what the existing non-conforming facade is.
Yeah. Yes.
And if it's not too difficult to do those calculations, we usually like to have those in the decisions. The volume is not as much of a concern as the facade calculation.
And we're also planning to use the same, the contractor that helped my grandmother, um, renovate her home, because she's done extensive work on the property, is the same contractor who's gonna do the addition, and he's planning to use the same materials, the same, um, you know, craftsmanship that he provided for the home earlier, so it's gonna look seamless, if, if we can, if we can do it.
Now, now I know that the Dennehys' letter through their attorney requested, you know, simply a request, um, that there be one window, and not, uh, and that, that there be nothing on the sloped shed roof, uh, you do have, I think, mentioned a small window there to let light in, is that correct?
And maybe
Have you discussed that with the Dennehys? I don't know what their concern was, um.
I'll, I'll pull up the elevation, so, and maybe Steve can talk about his discussions with them, because I wasn't there for that part, but I, I do think that's been resolved.
Am I still on for volume?
Sure.
So you can hear me, Woody?
Yup.
Okay, yeah, we, I did go over that, sorry Caroline, but I will, I'll take this for just a second here.
Oh, it's fine, I mean, I would rather
I, I did go over with Mr. Dennehy, uh, that there will be that one, the one window that's there. I think originally there was some confusion that what he, what was seen on the roof as the small skylight was some type of a vent, and the vent for the bathroom is actually going to be on the back of the house, rather than the side facing towards the Dennehys, I don't know if I mentioned that or not, but, um, a- all of the issues that were in the attorney's letter have been addressed with Mr. Dennehy, and if he is there, you certainly can click him in for a second, and, uh, we went back and forth as, as late as, uh, probably five o'clock today, and he said that he is
Well, we'll, we'll, we'll call him up in a, in a few moments, but I think if the board has other questions of either you or, um, Ms. Nguyen, you'd rather, you know, keep that focus first.
Okay.
Great. So, board members, questions of either Steve or Caroline? Mike?
Yeah, I don't have any questions, Woody.
Okay, Lee?
I do, I do agree with, I, I do agree with Dave that it's, would be good if we could have the actual calculations of the increase in, uh, square footage and volume.
We absolutely can get that for you.
Okay. All right, um, I guess that may be it temporarily, at least for the board, uh, Jen, who do we have in the audience who might like to, um, participate?
Can we just ask Caroline to stop sharing, um, and that'd be great, and then I will, um, thank you, Caroline. Um, so I have Pam Dennehy, uh, who might be both of them, I will promote them, they are raising their hand to speak.
Sure.
All right, um, Pam Dennehy has been promoted, so I've asked them to, I've asked them to unmute.
Okay, great.
Good evening, can you hear me okay?
Yup.
Okay, great, all right, well, this is John Dennehy, my wife, Pam and I live, obviously, at twenty-three Border, as discussed. I know the board's seen the letter, uh, I don't think there's any reason to, to, to reiterate that. I think Steve's done a good job recapping the discussions we've had. Uh, I think it's important to note that, uh, we have had these conversations, um, since primarily we moved in, uh, a year ago, and I want the board to know that we, we totally respect, uh, Marlene's desire to make modifications in our home, uh, so that she can adapt it to her needs, and we want to be good neighbors. So with that, we're not, uh, objecting to this proposed addition, uh, certainly it's very close to our house. Um, what we would ask the board is if they do decide to grant, uh, the special permit, um, that they would re- we, we would request that, uh, you know, the things that Steve just reviewed, um, uh, be, you know, contained as, as certain conditions, uh, within the special permit, and I can quickly just go through that if you'd like, because they are different than what was in the letter. Um, you mentioned screening on our property, ensure that, uh, the drainage is adequate, uh, to prevent water from impacting our property, um, that activities associated with the foundation for the new addition, uh, be conducted by hand digging, and that blasting and hammering be prohibited, uh, that all venting be done on the back of the addition. And, uh, as he said, uh, there'd be one skylight, it would be flush, uh, on the roof, uh, and there would be just the one window that's on the wall, obviously facing our yard, and that, uh, that the pipes, uh, would be hidden. So with that, we thank you for your attention, and hope you'll consider adding these conditions to any approval, uh, you may issue for the requested special permit.
Absolutely. Now, board, any questions of either the Dennehys or Jen, are there other people queuing up?
We do have, um, many neighbors in the audience, but, uh, no one has raised their hands or put anything in the Q and A, if anyone does, let's just be, they could raise their hand, let me know, and I'll promote them, um, give them a second, see if that happens.
I, I, I would like to say, if, if a neighbor is going to speak, it would be helpful to the board if you would add, um, new information, as opposed to, we like the plan. Uh, because we do have a few letters already to say we like the plan, and you don't have to.
And I will note And I will notate those letters in the minutes as well. All right. So nobody's raised their hand, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Board members, anybody, any last questions or? I would, otherwise I would, I, I appreciate, by the way, the fact that both parties here have been in dialogue and cordially, it, it certainly seems we don't always get that, but I appreciate the effort. I would make a motion per our regular practice to continue this hearing until next month, at which time we expect to have a draft decision and can commence deliberations, but because of the ticking clock, we can't close the hearing tonight. Or at least easily. I hope that isn't too much of an inconvenience.
Woody, can we, can we give you the, that calculation that you're looking for, the percentage of the square footage increase in the setback at, at any time, so that that could be incorporated in the decision?
Actually, it probably be helpful, the sooner the better, along with, if you have agreed conditions that you can put in writing.
Yeah.
That, that would be helpful too.
So we have a piece of paper, but yes. Yes, please don't wait for the last moment. I mean, we really request that everything come in at least seven workdays before the next hearing, and anything sooner just makes it that much.
Okay, so can I assume that this will not be deliberated on at nine thirty tonight? And that will be on the next available meeting?
Yeah, because they, we have a 14-day, you, Steve probably knows well as anybody, we have a 14-day window. And rather than get it tied up or, we'd, we'd rather have a draft decision in hand. So, so that is November 2nd, is it, Jen?
Yes, that's November 2nd.
We would be prepared to do our final deliberation then.
Okay, and I'm assuming that there's nothing else to be addressed, that this is 39 years of doing this. This is a pretty simple, a simple situation, I think, and hopefully the board will look favorably on this.
Okay.
So I'll, we'll get that into you right away. I'll, I'll chat with Caroline tomorrow and we'll, we'll get that right over to you. And I'll also get you the proposed conditions.
Okay.
Thank you all very much for your time.
Well, thank you. It was very.
Thank you.
Easy to follow.
I appreciate your time.
Woody, I move that we continue until November 2nd?
Okay, moved. Who has a second? Charlie seconded, I believe, so all in favor? Woody, should a guy?
Dave McMorrissey.
Michael Dickey, aye.
Okay. So it's continued until November 2nd. Before we close tonight, we will assign the drafter of a decision for deliberation. And that person can then start the process. Okay, so with that done, we have three deliberations tonight. The first two of which are drafted by Mike Dickey on 74 Beet Street, first of which is the revetment, and the second is the dock. We have questions of Mike beyond that which came up during the continued hearing. I don't know how many of you have had a chance to, it did come in, what, today, Jen?
What, John, is the, the?
Mike's drafts, or was it yesterday? I'm a little.
They came, they came in last night.
Last night, okay.
Yep.
I hope everybody's had a chance to look at them. With the, with the change, it's really a doc change. Well, let's save that for the second vote. The first one is the revetment. And the issue of height over, I think we could probably, Mike, take it, I don't remember. Your, your decision, I, I left it on, online. But I think John Cavanaro provided the height calculations in the,
Yep.
in the plan, so.
And, and, and apparently, again, my error, but I was working off of a, 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 a slightly.
Well, maybe what we can do is work off your template from now on. There you go.
That was the, the starvish decision I sent in that.
Oh, yeah.
And that one was very compli, you know, much more complicated, I think. So that could be part of it, and I didn't get it to Mike until yesterday, so that's on me.
That's okay. No, it, it was complicated. It was also on a 45-degree slope, as I recall.
It's really high up and different, you know, a different piece of property.
So board members, questions of Mike?
Well, it's Charlie. I don't, I don't have the draft decision in front of me. I have read it. I think condition number five, or the finding number five was that it wouldn't affect the flood, the purposes of the floodplain, or preserving the floodplain. Because it was in a residential district, I don't think that has anything to do with it. It's, it's, it should be, it will not affect the, the condition of the floodplain or something, something to that effect.
Was a residential district reference, I remember seeing that, Mike, in the template as well. I think Charlie makes a good point.
I approve of the decision.
Yeah. But residential and non-residential, it's the same.
Well, I, I guess that the precedent that I used, which I guess coming from 2019, it was RB zoning district, not a, not, 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 so that's a different district from, from where, where this property is located.
74 is not an RB. Is it RC?
RB, five, the, 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 the decision that I used as a precedent involved 457 and 449 Jerusalem Road.
That would have been RC.
That's RC, so I think.
Oh, that, well, then that's a typo. That's a typo in the decision from 2019, because it says Cohasset's RB zoning.
Oh, okay.
It could be.
But the, but the district itself, the zoning district doesn't matter. I mean, this is probably in the floodplain and watershed protection district, which is an overlay. And, and is this, so it would apply to any district that it exists in, if that makes any.
Okay, well, I, I mean, should, should I keep, delete, or change number five?
Could we, could someone, I have the same problem, Charlie. I, I left it live. Could somebody read condition five?
Sure, I have it here.
Okay.
Says the ground coverage of the pier is supported by eight pilings in total.
That, that's, that, that's not the revetment, that's the.
Oh, that's the dock.
Dock decision.
Let me go back to the revetment.
I have it.
Okay, go ahead.
It, now, the, the use of the land will continue to be residential and hence will not derogate whatsoever from the purpose of this bylaw. That's one number five.
I don't understand how that's particularly relevant. Somebody help me.
It's 97H. Among the can, the elements that have to be shown, number five is the proposed use of the land does not derogate substantially from the purposes of the floodplain and watershed protection district. So Michael's just addressing that particular condition by saying the proposed use is going to continue to be residential, so it's not going to derogate.
Although I learned earlier, Dave, that I, I, I should, I should focus in on 9.7D, not 9.7H. So I'll, I'll, I'll have to go back and kind of correct for that.
Okay, I think the format you have is fine.
Yeah, the, it's a special permit, and, and it really says at, at the top of 97, subject to any conditions, basically what it's saying, is subject to any conditions that the board may wish to impose. But if you're not imposing any floodplain and watershed protection conditions, fine, it's, it's moved. I mean, you know, it, it, it complies. So, I don't know, I, I, okay, well, anyway, we're, I'd make a motion. Go ahead, Charlie.
I just said, it's a minor draft and change. I, I, I'll put here, write something and give it to Jen.
Okay. All right, so as edited. Okay, so I'd make a motion that we accept the decision as written and to be edited for our conversation this evening.
Second.
Okay, moving seconded, all in favor? Woody, should a guy?
Against an aye.
Dave McMorrissey.
Lee Darcey.
Michael Dickey, aye.
Okay, unanimously accepted or approved, the second decision has to do with the dock itself. Steve is also drafted.
Michael's drafted.
Ah, yes, all right. I thought I could trip Dave up, but not.
No. Not going to start me.
All right. Okay, as Mike Dickey has drafted, what, what discussion do we want to have on this dock? It was, come my mind, pretty, pretty basic. Charlie, you'd brought up earlier, you want to make sure that there's a statement in there that's, this is not interfering with the flow of water. Probably H2 or something of that sort.
I think, again, I don't have the decision in front of me. I think it says something like, since there was no, no discussion of this, it is assumed to be true. That's why I asked John to say it wouldn't affect flood flow. So we do have some statement on, on that effect. I don't think we just assume there's no flood flow without some sort of evidence or at least statement.
Right, there has to be some affirmative statement or submission. It'd be just as simple as you've just put it, but there has to be something. Should we ask John for a kind of a clarifying memorandum?
I don't think we need one.
He answered my question, it wouldn't have any effect, so I think.
Okay, so it's the testimonies.
All we have to do is refer to that rather than say there was nothing, therefore it's all right.
Okay.
What, what, what were you thinking i- in terms of additional text in the decision, Charlie?
I think it's not additional. Unfortunately, I don't have the actual wording, but the wording is that since, since nobody said anything, it will not affect the flow of water. And now we can say it was testified that wouldn't have flowed the water.
Okay.
I think, yeah, Mike, under, under your section on findings, section three, C, has to do with the water course not being affected. And I think you just need to make reference to that in the decision, and that's done.
Okay.
It was testified that it would not interfere or affect or whatever.
So what, just beef up 3C a bit to say, but what John Cavanaro or the engineer testified to the board that water quality or nat- natural drainage pattern would not be adversely affected?
Fine.
Yeah, I would put it in your finding number seven. Looks like that's where it would belong.
Okay. Okay. Okay, let me. Okay, I can add a little blurb to that effect, save a new version.
And other than that, looks fine to me.
Okay, any other edits from the part of the board or suggestions for? If not, I'd make a motion to accept the decision as written and as amended. Okay, moved and seconded, all in favor? Woody, should a guy?
Davidson second.
Dave McMorrissey.
Lee Darcey.
Michael Dickey, aye.
All right. So the last one is, oh, yeah, 10, 10 Island Court. We've had included that hearing tonight. We have a draft by Lee. Maybe straightening out some of the numbers that I could understand the confusion between square footage and cubic, but, but any rate, with, with some slight tightening there. I, I again, think this is not going to be detrimental to the neighborhood, given its placement and it's a crowded neighborhood and they're moving it back, or the addition has moved back even farther from the setback, although still in, within it. So the people, anybody like to have a contrary point of view on this one?
I agree with you, Woody. I, you know, went up there, drove around, read all the letters, read all the information. And it is a tight neighborhood, but the two close, the closest neighborhood, the neighbors have thoroughly endorsed it. And most of the addition is going to be on the easterly side of the property is the furthest away from the closest neighbors. And on that street, a lot of houses almost sit right on the street.
Absolutely, absolutely. It's, well, it's a very old neighborhood, you know, that's, so, and at least in this case, this is not, in my estimation, making it more detrimental. It's, it's really sort of harmoniously fitting into the topography in a way that some of the other houses may not be able to claim. So anything else on the part of the board? Otherwise, I'd make a motion to accept the decision as written, and there'd probably be a, a few kind of number edits or tweaks, but beyond that, nothing of substance.
Yes, I'll, I'll review the.
But that's, that's, that isn't going to change any of your findings or?
No, no, it's just clearing up to make sure the numbers are all in the right.
Okay, so I've, I've made a motion to accept the decision as written and, and to be amended. Just, just for, I can make sure the numbers are consistent. Do we have a second? I guess, was that Dave?
It's me, yeah.
Okay, you kind of was going in and out. Woody, should a guy?
Michael Dickey, aye.
Lee Darcey.
Okay, great. We're not going to get hearings this brief.
No.
In our, in our lifetime, again, I guess, we have as board business approval of the minutes. And I guess that really is.
And then I, I also submitted a couple edits to both of the applications for all of you, and I highlighted them in yellow. They're not, not huge. I don't know if you, if you saw them in the back.
Oh, I didn't know what they were, okay.
So that, yeah, it might email it. Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, I had a question on the, on the regular application.
Yes.
Um, in the, you asked for volumetric calculations for increases in non-conformity.
Yes.
Can we add to that?
Yes.
For the, the dimensional?
What, the dimensional?
The total amount of square footage increased in the non-conform and, not, the existing non-conforming facade, the proposed non-conforming facade and the percentage increase in non-conforming facade.
All right, so I'm going to rewrite it and send it to you. Make sure that you're okay with that.
Because I mean, we always end up asking for it.
Right, and which is, right, and it makes sense to just put it in, right? And I tell everybody, they're going to ask for it, so put it in your first, put, put it in your first month that you're there. And the other one, as I added the use variance, we can't see it on the screen because that was just approved And the other one is I added the use variance, we can't see it on the screen because that was just approved by the AG, which is what I was referring to, so we should be getting updated. We don't get books, but I will make pretty books for everybody. And I'm also going to send you the link to the bylaws, because they're.
Use special permit, I think.
Yeah, so I petitioned for use. A use variance, isn't that what it is?
Yes.
No, I think, I think we agreed that it.
A use special permit?
It's a use special permit. If something is specifically prohibited, it requires a variance, but that's, that's the rule today.
All right, so we're changing.
What's new is a special permit, that if it is not mentioned, we have the discretion to apply the special permit finding, because it has not been prohibited by the town.
Right, no, that's perfect, that's, see, this is why I bring it to you.
That's right.
That's why I also added no blank spaces. Because I can't stand when they just write no change, right? We want to have the actual figures, so there's no questions. And then the volume metrics. And the doc was really simple, the doc I just added, I like a section, that, this, this is a perfect example. Seventy-four, there's never, there's never a call for, so I removed one item that we don't use, which is the docket number which I assigned, so it wouldn't be on the application. And just replaced it with what the relief, just to put the exact relief they're looking for, for the doc, so we know what to refer to. Because there are differences and so like tonight showed with seventy-four. So that'll help, I think. So I just wanted to get your input and approval on these so that I can make these amendments. I'll send them around one more time, just with the understanding that you'll get an okay.
Yeah, I wasn't too sure what the, I, I shouldn't have spent a little more time on it, the, the yellow markings, I must say, I looked at them quickly, too quickly, but I'm sure, you know, yeah, if you wouldn't mind, I mean, I'd, I'd like to.
No, I'll send it back out again.
One more look, we might as well.
Right, and then I can, yeah, if you, if you want to just vote them as amended, because we're going to amend them and then I'll get them up, because we'd love to, love to get them used sooner than later.
Okay, I'd make such a motion to approve the forms as amended.
I second that motion.
Seconded, would each of the guy?
Against an eye.
Dave McMorrissey.
Michael Dickey, aye.
Lee Darst, aye.
Okay, accepted unanimously.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that and.
Let's not forget the minutes.
No.
I don't know if anybody's had a chance to go through them.
I did, thank you very much, Jen, it was helpful with me writing my decision. Here are those to my notes, so thank you, and I read them and thought they were accurate. Thank you.
Yeah, I didn't, oh, Charlie usually finds something.
I know, come on, Charlie, don't let me down.
Come on.
I'll take the border streets.
Oh, what a good guy, all right. I go, but, but how about the minutes, which is what we were on, are there any edits to the minutes of?
No.
I didn't have anything, Dave, did you or Mike? No, these are very good, and I, I must say, I appreciate every time you do these, because it's it looks so simple when you read it like this. When you're listening, it's not simple.
And when you see my notes that don't make any sense to you.
Yeah, it's probably because we don't make any sense, but we won't go there. Okay, so we have that and.
So I just need to vote on those and I'll throw them.
Make a motion to approve the minutes as written for the September seventh meeting.
I second them.
All right, Lee seconded it, would each of the guy?
Charlie's an eye.
Dave McMorrissey.
Michael Dickey, aye.
Okay, approved unanimously, and Charlie, thank you for volunteering. And Jen, do we have anything very quickly before we go, coming up that we know is going to vex us or?
Oh, we have, no, we have, I believe we're going to get a second application, but I haven't received it yet, and I forget what, when I think it is. But I know that we are going to get an amendment to in a previous application that you approved for five oh eight Chief, Chief Justin Cushing Highway, which was the auto shop. They, during COVID, they, they, both of the, they have a storage shed, you know, the one, Peter Capazoli. He, he raised, rebuilt the special, you gave him a special permit about, I think in seventeen, eighteen. And so he has two structures on the property, one's a storage shed, one is the auto shop and the office, and but both have the same kind of drainage as if they were in auto shop. During COVID, he had to separate his mechanics and he's been using it, the water department, because it's near a resource area, was upset, although but the use does say that that's supposed to be a storage shed, so they're coming back to amend that. Because they have the proper drainage, so it's not, but the, but the use is, is not what they're using it for, so they're amending that to request that. And that's what I know right now. Deadlines tomorrow, so I could have more.
All right, that sounds manageable. All right, well, with that, I would make a motion to adjourn the meeting. All right, moved and seconded, on favor, would each of the guy?
Robinson, aye.
Dave McMorrissey.
Lee Darst, aye.
Michael Dickey, aye.
All right.
And what we're going to do next meeting is we're going to do the roll call in alpha order, and then you'll always know, you won't stop, stop on each other. I, I hear you all, because I know the voices, but anybody else, I get them in the order, but.
Jen, on, on next, I don't know, but at the next meeting, it sounds like we're, we're going to have a pretty light lift. I wonder if we should schedule in the zoning bylaw working group? There will have been a planning board hearing or two. There are three bylaws, amendments that are being recommended, I'm not sure, they're in kind of final form, one may still be in a little bit of flux, but.
That is a great idea. You know, I think that's a great idea, so I'll talk to Katie. And, but if we get a huge influx tomorrow for some reason, I'll let you know.
Yeah, no, I mean, if, but, but still, I mean, this board is going to be charged in at least one of those three to administer it, basically, so we've got to be up to speed. And comfortable
Yep.
With, with what's being recommended.
All right, I made a note of that.
Good, and if we can get your material in advance, we most certainly, certainly will. Okay, thank you all.
All right, everybody, take care.
Thanks.